Welcome to Commissioner's Court. This morning, as always, we have Brother Brent Williams with us to lead us in our invocation. And Commissioner McCam, please, please, sir.
All right, let's pray. Father, you have said in John 15 that without you, without Jesus, we can do nothing. So today, I pray that we could trust you with all of our heart, that we wouldn't lean on our own understanding, that we would acknowledge you, that you would make the path straight. We'd also cast all of our cares onto you because you care for us. And you've also commanded us to do not worry about anything, but in every circumstance, with prayer, with supplication, with thanksgiving, to make our request known to you, so that the peace of God, which transcends all understanding, will keep our hearts and our minds in Christ. You're the prince of peace. Let that be over this court today, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Brother Williams, thank you, sir. All right. Well, the time is nine a.m. We do have a floor, so we will call this meeting to order. Are there any citizens' comments?
No, sir.
Item number one, consider and take action on minutes from previously held meeting of Commissioners' Court, July 30 of 2024. Court, questions, comments, additions, deletions?
Hearing now, Judge, I move we approve the Commissioners' Court's regular session on July 30 of 2024 as presented.
I'll second his motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Tulley and seconded by Commissioner Spidey to approve the minutes of July 30 of 2024 as presented. All those in favor of the motion? Passes unanimously. Item number two is consider and discuss presentation and update from Meals on Wheels in East Texas. And this morning with us, we have representatives to talk to us about just exactly what Meals on Wheels does for us and how long they've been with us. So, good morning.
Good morning, Judge McKinney and Commissioners and citizens of Henderson County. Thank you for having me here today. My name is Tiffany Damskove. I'm the executive director for Meals on Wheels, and I have been in this role almost three years now, but have been with the organization over five. And Meals on Wheels has been serving this community in East Texas for over 50 years. We celebrated our 50th anniversary last October. We're very proud of that. We have also served over 22 million meals during that time, which is pretty impressive in itself in our small East Texas communities. But we have never strayed from our mission to serve older and disabled adults in this community and to help them to live more substantial lives in their own homes. And we've added one piece in the last couple of years, and that is a connection to other organizations so they can truly stay in their homes longer, because that one lunch five days a week is not going to help them stay in their homes. But us connecting them to other organizations that can help them make repairs, pay bills, and also get them the health care that they need is vital, and that is what our employees and our volunteers are able to do during those visits each week. So it's more than just a meal. It's also a social connection each time that we visit them. Many of our clients do not have anybody else in their lives, so they don't have a family member or a friend to talk to, and our employees and our volunteers become that friend to them and that person that can check in and make sure that they're safe and make sure that they're getting the resources that they need. And oftentimes, unfortunately, many of our volunteers and employees come across clients who have altered mental and health state, and we get, we are able to stay with them and get them the assistance that they need. And our employees and volunteers are trained to stay with them until emergency services arrive. And that is one of the reasons why I came to this organization. Over 20 years ago, this organization saved my grandfather's life because the volunteer came around lunchtime, and he had fallen and hit his head and was able to get emergency medical assistance because that volunteer came and checked on him. But it's also that nutritious meal. We offer five lunches a week. We deliver three days a week, but they do get five healthy nutritious meals that are regulated by a dietitian. And that healthy meal helps increase the effect of their medications. It also prevents fall risk, and also it makes them feel like they have a purpose because they're getting that meal each day. And the reason why I say there's a purpose there, I'm able to deliver meals at least once a month, and I've encouraged the staff to do the same, because when I drive up to that client's home, they're not waiting on that meal. They're waiting on me. They're waiting on that conversation with somebody that they can trust, somebody that's not trying to scam them or sell them something that they don't need. They're having that conversation with somebody that is loyal to the organization and to their needs. So that human interaction and that nutritious meal, that safety check, and that connection to other organizations is vital to our organization. And as far as in Henderson County goes, I'd like to let you know that we have over 300 clients in this county, and we serve 4,800 monthly meals. And 23% of your population is over the age of 65, and almost 10% are living in poverty, which means we have a lot more clients that we have the potential of reaching in this county. We drive 452 miles when we deliver meals just in this county. Overall, in our East Texas area, we cover a 3,500 square mile radius, which is impressive as well. So we have over 50 vehicles in our fleet that are managed by the organization and maintained. We have four sites in Henderson County, and this is the part I really like, because y'all are one of the best as far as volunteer hours go. We have 640 monthly volunteer hours just out of this county. So your citizens are helping take care of us. But some of the challenges that we have had over the last couple of years are many of the same that you are facing as well. Fuel increases, insurance increases, cost of purchasing the food that you put on your table. Imagine serving almost 2,600 people each day. Those food costs have really impacted us. But also, we're seeing a reduction in funding on a federal and state level, which trickles down to us. We have a strong bond with East Texas Council of Governments, and they have been our partner for all of this time, and we have partnered up just recently, and we have weekly meetings to figure out how to solve some of these needs that we have. But we also incurred issues with having enough faces to help us deliver meals. Of course, the pandemic reduced the number of volunteers, but we are steadily increasing that. And we've recently had to put our new client, potential new clients, on a waiting list because we've had to stop adding every single person that has come to us that is qualified for needs because of the funding reductions in our area. So how can you help? There are many ways that the court can help, and the citizens of Henderson County can assist us. We have a strong presence in this community, and one of the ways that you all can help is to increase the funding that comes from the county. You have been great supporters of us over the years, and we receive Texas Department of Agriculture match from the county. But we'd like you to consider additional funding from the county because of the number of clients that we serve and the number of meals that we serve each month. But there are many ways outside of that that the community can help. You can offer to volunteer with us, and if you've never done it, I encourage you to do it just once, because you'll be hooked. That conversation with that client who needs that also comes back to you, and you will be greatly rewarded for that opportunity. But also, finding other ways to help us through our events and through being a donor as well will help us. We've also done many things over the last couple of years to reduce the cost of our spending. We've expanded our reach and collaborated with other organizations that can help us, such as East Texas Council of Government and Health and Human Services. And we've had significant cuts without impacting the client's needs or reducing the number of meals that we serve each month. And I am open to questions, and you can see a more in-depth breakdown of our impact here in Henderson County and some of our needs and some of the things that we've done over the last year.
The Meals on Wheels has not been able, or should put this way, the age of volunteerism is passing us and COVID only escalated that passage. True?
Yes.
And how did you replace those individuals that you lost, because you did not lose any funding, any meals to be delivered?
We have gotten creative. We've offered incentives such as a simple thing like a t-shirt, and we've also tried very hard to decrease the gap in the age of our volunteers. We've really strived to get younger people involved in volunteering. We've partnered with the colleges in Tyler to get them involved, and we've encouraged young people to seek volunteerism through Meals on Wheels. A lot of people think of the food bank or other ways that they can volunteer, but those people that are at least 18 or over, they can volunteer with us, and they can get those community service hours that they need for their scholarships and for other organizations they're a part of. And I've also, monthly, I'm reaching out to civic organizations such as the Rotary and Lions Clubs and the Qantas Clubs, and they've been very receptive to helping us volunteer and offering also grants and funding through those organizations.
You also mentioned five locations in the county?
Yes.
Would you mind?
See, you're testing me. Athens, Cedar Creek Lake, Chandler, yes, Chandler's a potential site, or a congregate site, potential congregate site. Malakoff, we have a drop site and tool.
Drop site and tool.
Yes, sir.
That I was unaware of when we had discussed. How long has that one?
It's been over five years.
Really?
Yes. And it's just a meetup place where a couple of volunteers meet our driver, and they pick up their meals. We don't have a place that we go into. It's just they meet at a church under an awning.
When these programs started, they used to have, it was come and eat at a congregate site where the food was prepared at the location.
Yes.
And of course, that has changed.
Yes.
And now the food is prepared, but it is packaged and delivered.
Yes.
As opposed to the congregate setting.
All of the meals are prepared on Robertson Road in Tyler, Texas. They start at 4:00 a.m. every morning, prepping and cooking those meals fresh for our clients. And then our paid drivers deliver them to our 19 sites across East Texas, and then from there, volunteers and employees pick up those meals to deliver in the communities.
Court, questions? Discussion? Meals on Wheels has been God-sent to many in this county, and as we go through this budgetary process, we'll definitely be considering the value that you bring in return on investment. So, thank you very much for what you do. You handle, I think you cover five counties?
Six.
Six counties?
Six and a quarter. We have a little bit of Harrison County that's new.
And then Harrison County is the second largest, because y'all do Smith County as well?
Smith County, Gregg County is our largest, second to largest. Yes, sir.
Okay. Any further discussion? Well, thank you very much for bringing this to us and the consideration in the funding request. Is there a specific request or whatever we can do to help?
Whatever you can do to help.
I see there's $124,000 shortfall.
And I am not asking for all of that. We have, of course, had some other cuts, and we have fundraisers in progress that we have planned. But, so whatever the court can do to assist us and also the citizens of the community can also help as well.
Well, thank you very much. Court, any other discussion? All right, and thank you so much for bringing this to us.
Thank you.
All right. Item three, consider and take action on renewal of the 2024-25 employee health insurance benefits. Ms. Bell?
All right. Y'all get the attachments. Okay, so it's renewal time, and there was a little bit of changes on there, and it just needs judges' approval.
According to your backup, you will see the proposed changes that come, we're looking at an overall, how much increase percentage wise?
Two percent.
Two percent, which has not happened in forever, I guess. It's one of, it's truly one of the least amounts, and when you're looking at this, is it because the insurance company just got happy or what?
No, we had some, go ahead.
Well, there was.
I know our incentive program has really kicked in for the last three years pretty heavy, and it's definitely made a difference. And I think the committee will speak up to say that, you know, this is what we talked about the four years together when we did this. So it's, we're starting to see a change and a turnaround in that.
We're getting there, slowly but surely.
Well, when we started it, it was three to five years.
Yes.
What we kind of figured before, we'd never seen anything.
Yes.
And I think you can start seeing it now with this two percent.
We are. Where?
We've been up to 12, 13%, 18%.
No change last year and a little bit of a change this year, so.
So the implementation of the annual physical?
That's it.
Along with the tobacco sensation and coupled with some of the healthy county activities, and maybe not them themselves, but the educational part of just being active lifestyle.
That's it. More advocate people, we're trying to get people more, get more people on board, spread the word, see, this is how we can get our premiums down, you know, promote healthy county, a lot more than what we have.
No, no, no. No, go ahead.
I want to say thank you to y'all for doing, for all that you do, keeping Healthy County out in front of everybody. And I think that makes a difference.
It does.
And I know for five or six years, we never heard anything.
Yeah.
And then now it's in the forefront. All the employees have opportunity to see it, and I think that's made a big difference. And some of them may not, may not pay any attention to it, but just seeing something on there now, that gets you thinking about it.
And I believe, Anne Marie, you might help me on this one. Cobra?
Yes.
We are going to be outsourcing that to Blue Cross instead of our department working that, because it gets a little challenging sometimes. So we did hear back from Ramesha, and the county, there's going to be, it says there's a one-time fee, only occurred when a member enrolls in Cobra coverage, and it's the only fee that Henderson County would be responsible for. It's a one-time for us. Of course, the Cobra participants will have an additional 2% for their monthly premium, and they'll be collecting that. That's not anything we have to do. We felt like it was worth it for all the trouble.
It is a lot of trouble. The hard time getting them to pay sometimes, and we take them off insurance, we take it back on, and this, at least that falls out of our hands. We still have to have the retirees to manage, which is another ballgame, but this should help quite a bit with the work we do in the Curators Office.
There's the legacy of retiring, and then there's Cobra.
Right, this is just Cobra.
Just Cobra.
This one will have nine former employees on Cobra. I think that brought three in spring, but you know, everything's going to roll off and roll on.
Court, questions? This is health benefits, this is dental, this is vision, all of our health benefits.
On our Cobra administration on the page in the backup, it says a county group is responsible for filling Cobra notification processing requirements. So we still notify, or you said something about Blue Cross, Blue Shield?
We notify people of their eligibility, if they're much still on Cobra, that once on Cobra.
The Blue Shield, so we got the notification.
It's an option.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing now, entertain a motion.
Judge, I move we take action and approve the renewal of 2024-2025 employee health insurance benefits with the judge's authorization to sign.
I'll second the motion. Motion made by Commissioner Tulley and seconded by Commissioner Richardson to approve the renewal of the 2024-25 employee health insurance benefits with the judge's authorization to sign. Any further discussion? I did want to say thank you to the insurance committee. Y'all spend a lot of time every year going through these, and we appreciate your efforts. Anything further? All those in favor of the motion? Passes unanimously. Item number four is consider and take action on the 2024-2025 proposed employee wellness incentive plan. Ms. Bell?
Okay, we'd like to continue with the same county-specific incentive program, and that's the $25 monthly fee for the annual physical and the 25 monthly fee for tobacco certification. So I think we're doing really good on that, again, as we talked about it a while ago. And I do a monthly reach out to employees to remind them. I constantly send out notifications to make sure that they're getting this done in a timely manner, so that we can avoid charging them. We don't like anybody to be charged, so we reach out pretty often to get them to comply with it.
Court, questions, comments? I did want to say, Ms. Bell, thank you for managing of that. It is daunting, not only that, but along with, as we just completed, and I believe we're 100% on our cybersecurity training, which is another one of those steps that are requirements we have to meet, and you manage that for us as well. So, thank you.
That's fair.
Court, any further discussion?
I'm just glad that we can stay the way we are and not have to up it to getting people's pocketbook to get their attention. So it's been great over the last three or five years that this was implemented, and we're getting a great return on our investment, so.
Any further discussion? entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve with the judge's authorization to sign.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Richardson and seconded by Commissioner McCam to approve the 2024-25 proposed employee wellness incentive plan. Judge's authorization? Judge's authorization, sign. Any further comments? All those in favor? Passes unanimously. Item number five is consider and take action on a request to use proceeds from the Healthy County Fund for prize drawings for the wellness incentive program.
Okay, so we wanted to start buying some gift cards. We revamped our little committee for Healthy County. We've got a full schedule coming. We found a lot of walks that are going to be locally, like the Black IP Walk, the Scorpion Walk at Portis Creek, just different events, Turkey Trot November that's coming up, and we're going to try to get some incentives for people to maybe be a part of that and enter them to drawings where we can get more people involved. Hopefully, word of mouth will travel, and we're just going to try to do monthly plannings like this and see if, you know, they can get their partners to come out and do walking, we'll have mileage contests, just a lot of different things that we're looking at. We're waiting for the new fall schedules to come out, where we can add them to our calendars and put them out to people that might want to participate, just promoting Healthy County again.
Court, questions? You mentioned the reorganization of the committee, and we do this every year.
Every year, we try to find the best, the people that can be available to help bring some really good ideas to the table that we can get our employees going.
And this, and this request is to make our Healthy County funds available for this process, correct?
Where do our Healthy County funds come from?
Healthy County funds come from.
The Coke shake?
No, no, that's a different set.
Oh.
This is reimbursement from tag as a part of what directly.
This has to do with the people who are involved in Healthy County activities, they give us a reward. So the more people we get involved, the more money we'll get each year. So right now, they count as almost $28 in my waters. I'm not sure we got about $28, $20 in, but that'll go up as we get more people involved.
And this, this fund can only be spent for these purposes?
Yes, yes.
So, and as you tell, we have ample funding available to really put an effort in to continuing the trend on helping buy talent. So, any further discussion? In that, I would ask that, in our motion to approve this, I would ask that we also include the amendments to the committee, approving making funding available and adding to the provable list of the committee. Any further discussion? entertain a motion.
I make the motion, make the funds available and approve the amendments by the committee.
I'll second.
Motion made by Commissioner McCam and seconded by Commissioner Spidey to approve the request for the use of proceeds from the Healthy County Fund for prize drawings and for the wellness incentive program and the amendments to the Healthy County Committee as presented. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, man. Item number six is receive financial reports. These financial reports will provide J.P. District and County Court financials. These are available for viewing at the Court and County Fudders Office if you wish to do so. Item number seven is consider and take action on payroll distributions and accounts cash sheet. We've got a couple of those.
We have biweekly 15 and 16 for approval.
Court, questions concerning 15 or 16? If not, entertain a motion.
I'd like to make the motion to accept the payroll dispersions for biweekly 15 and 16 as presented.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Spidey and seconded by Commissioner Tulley to approve the payroll distributions for biweekly 15 and 16 as presented. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Passes unanimously. Item eight is consider and take action on state contracts. We have none. Item number nine is consider and take action on the request for a right-of-way bridge. Commissioner Spidey?
Yes, Court, I have one for Lakeshore Utilities, for a two-inch water and sewer line extension and Clearwater Base subdivision. It's approximately 100 foot of line that they're going to bore in the right-of-way.
Questions for the Commissioner? entertain a motion.
I'd like to make the motion to approve the proposed line activity for Lakeshore Utilities to extend the two-inch water and sewer lines approximately 100 feet from 116 shoreline to 119 and 21 shoreline and Clearwater Base subdivision, located in precinct one with the Commissioner's authorization assigned.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Spidey and seconded by Commissioner McCam to approve the right-of-way bridge with Lakeshore Utility Company for installation of two-inch water and sewer bore along Shoreline Drive with the Commissioner's authorization assigned. Any further discussion? All those in favor? All those in favor, passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Commissioner McCam?
Yes, I have one from Leadville Water Supply Company. It's a road board for new service at 13117 County Road 3610 in Brownsburg. They have a road board with a two-inch casing and one-inch poly service tube with a tracer line.
Questions for the commissioner? Entertained a motion?
I make the motion that we approve the notice of proposed utility line activity for Leadville Water Supply Company for a road board for new service at 13117 County Road 3610.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner McCam and second by Commissioner Richardson to approve the right-of-way grid with Leadville Water Supply Corporation for a road board installation along at 13117 County Road 3610 in Brownsburg with the commissioner's authorization to sign. Any further discussion? All those in favor, passes unanimously. Item number 10, consider and take action on submitted budget amendments, which we have none. Item number 11 is consider and take action on payment bills. Ms. Parker?
Yes, we have this through year 2024 in the amount of $232,671 and 5 cents.
Mr. Spidey, questions?
She's already answered mine, Judge, so no questions.
Mr. Tulley?
None.
Mr. McCam?
Well.
Mr. Richardson?
Yeah, I had questions also about some bills on the power on there, but she said that we'd, that she discussed with you on there about going ahead and paying them and we figured out at a later date.
Yeah, there were five, I think, bills that when they, in the wonderful world of electric deregulation, portions that we had under contract were sold to another company. And in that transfer, they mistakenly, these locations we no longer had, but they were booked to us. And these are ones that I think all told us about $1,200, $1,500, all total. Get them done and we'll square it up later. Let's get it done and move down the road. Any further discussions on the bills? Entertained a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the fiscal year 2024 bills in the amount of $232,671 and 5 cents as presented.
I'll second his motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Richardson, second by Commissioner Spidey to approve the bills in the amount of $232,671 and 5 cents as presented. Any further discussion? All those in favor, passes unanimously. Item number 12 is consider and take action on submitted plats.
Three plats, two, one present for an obvious...
Commissioner Tulley?
Yes, Court, this is the normal Pinnacle Club plat where they've taken two lots and combined them into one in Phase A, Phase 1A.
Questions for the commissioner?
Hearing non-judge, I move we approve the final replat of Pinnacle Club Phase 1A Lot 133 and 134, creating Lot 133R for filing purposes only.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Tulley and second by Commissioner McCam to approve the final replat in Pinnacle Club Phase 1, creating Lot 133R for filing purposes only. Any further discussion? All those in favor, passes unanimously.
The next one is the same, it's in Phase 1, Section B. It will be combining two lots into one.
Questions for the commissioner? Entertained a motion?
Judge, I move we approve the final replat for Pinnacle Club Phase 1, Section B, lots 640 and 641, creating Lot 640R for filing purposes only.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Tulley and second by Commissioner McCam to approve the final replat in Pinnacle Club Phase 1, Section D, creating Lot 64R for filing purposes only.
640R.
What'd that say?
64.
64, 640R.
There you go.
For filing purposes only. Any further discussion on the grammar? All those in favor, passes unanimously. All right, Commissioner Richardson?
Yes, Court, this is a small subdivision that's in Precinct Four. It's called the Martinez Edition. It consists of just three lots. Like I say, anytime we subdivide land below a certain acreage, we had to create a subdivision. So, these lots are all just, just over one acre. They've got all their letters from the power company and the water company. They've got historical backup. The only thing that I noticed on the plat is in the lower left-hand corner, we got our locator map. It looks like it is wrong on the location of where the plat is. I don't know if that's, makes a difference on the final plat, if that needs to be changed or if that's something that's not critical.
You throw that to...
It just, it's like a, just maybe, just a little bit down the road from where it is, they're showing it's between two streaks and it should be on the other side, down past four other lots that's on the other side of that road.
Rich County Attorney?
Probably does not make the plat legally insufficient. You know, it's an issue of if you want to ride.
Yeah.
Probably better that it be done right, that it's an accurate record where it's at, probably could just not cause it to be anything legally deficient.
Yeah, the abstract survey number and all that's going to, you know, locate where it's at. It's just kind of identified on the plat map. But I noticed that after we looked at this, that it was in, showing in the wrong location.
I don't know what type of time brand you own it. Again, that's probably something that's not in current pattern. It used to be done this week. We go back, ask them to make that correction.
Reprint it.
Got one more for you, Rich County Attorney. Our subdivision regulations state all easements must be noted, and there's a note on here that says that they, there could be possibly others.
Yeah, that's something that we're going to correct also, make sure, are there easements or not?
I just saw that.
I mean, looking at, just looking at it, probably not.
Right.
That's something we're going to...
Commissioner?
I'd say we table this to next week, make a motion to table it and get the corrections done on the plat.
Okay.
It's got the easement deal. I'm not too worried about the map locator, but on the easement part of it, we'll see if we can get that, we'll get it all corrected at one time.
Do we want to table it or do we have to take action on it?
Yeah, as long as we take action within 30 days from this filing, we won't run afoul of statute as far as it being automatically created. So, taking, tabling it for a week or two won't hurt us as long as we earmark it and have it back before that 30 days. Was that a motion and did I hear a second?
I'll second it if he's motioning.
Okay. Make a motion to table.
Motion by Commissioner Richardson, second by Commissioner Tulley to table the proposed southern plat to a later date. Any further discussion? All those in favor, passes unanimously. Item 13, open and consider bids? We have none. Item 14 is consider and take action to adjourn. I'll move.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner McCam, second by Commissioner Tulley to adjourn at 9:38. All those in favor, passes unanimously. We will begin a workshop.